All right, we're going to open our meeting. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Town of East Bridgewater Planning Board. It's Monday evening, August 16th, 2021. We'll call it 7:02 PM. First item of business is the minutes of Monday, August 2nd.
Move to approve the minutes as presented for August 2nd.
Okay. That's a motion, Riley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Bates. Any further discussion on the motion to approve the minutes of August 2nd as printed? Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We'll show that as unanimous vote of all six members present and voting. Next item is a discussion with Building Commissioner Patrick Franny concerning the potential wording changes in the accessory structures in the Town of East Bridgewater zoning bylaw. So I think everyone has seen the...I think I've sent around...well, looking at it now, it says three drafts because it says draft three. So I'll let our Building Commissioner, Patrick, take over and let us know where he is with that.
Okay, sure. So just a little background for everybody. The...it was my understanding that the detached accessory structures could encroach on the side yard or the rear yard setback, but they could not encroach on the front yard setback. And then it was brought to my attention that actually what they thought the bylaw was supposed to mean is an accessory building cannot go between the principal structure, your house, and the street regardless of how far off the street it is. So that wasn't very clear. So I came to the planning board to say, can we get first determine exactly what the intent is and then get the wording of the bylaw clear so that I knew and everybody that came to the counter knew exactly what it meant? That's pretty much it.
Okay, so I think the draft three, that's the last one that was passed around, I think addresses the issue that was raised. Basically, like clearly saying that a detached accessory building may only be located in the side or rear yard areas on the same lot as the principal building. And obviously, it has to still comply with the dimensional requirements in the zoning bylaw. Detached accessory building setback in a side yard area is 10 feet. Principal building or an attached accessory building to the principal building, and the bylaws also clarified that, an attached garage, for example, is considered an integral part of the accessory building. So it would require a 25-foot side yard. So I think the language as it's here addresses the two questions that had been previously raised.
Right.
And we have, to answer your question, after I read it a bunch of times, I would agree that reading it, you could read it two different ways. We had always in the past treated the front yard as all of that area from the front line of the house all the way to the street line.
Okay.
So this clarifies that so that it's consistent with what we've...the way we've always enforced it, at least since I've been on the planning board for 42 years. And that was the explanation I got from the building inspector when I first got on the planning board, that the front yard, for the purposes of setbacks and so forth, is the line beginning at the house to the street. The minimum front yard is the number that's in the tables in the zoning bylaw.
Right. So with this, and also just so we're all on the same page, with this, there's no relief, there's no opportunity for a special permit or anything. So basically, in East Bridgewater, you can't have an accessory structure between your house and the street, period.
Well, let me ask this question. Do we have any idea of how many estate or pork chop lots there are in East Bridgewater? So would that be an issue where you have these lots that are set, or retreat lots, so-called, set way back, you know, where they have a long driveway and they're, you know, they're pretty well off the street? It's not going to bother anybody, one would think.
There's quite a few, but I don't know the number. I honestly don't.
So I mean, is that something that might want to be considered in here in those particular situations?
I think part of the issue there, though, Kevin, is the...typically, the estate lots and those prior to the estate lot bylaw being adopted, setbacks typically when we have 30 or 40 feet. Estate lot has to be 40 feet wide, but there's no buildable area within that neck until you get to the right part of the house.
Correct, right. So that's the...right, that's what I'm thinking. So in other words, once you get beyond that, you're still theoretically in the front yard, right?
Yes.
Yes, technically speaking, yes.
So, I mean, I'm just asking the question. I don't, you know, for those people, that might be, you know, where they've got a house that might not otherwise, you know, with either wetlands or something else in the back of it where you can't put a shed or something out in the back.
Right.
Maybe in the front area, it's not going to, you know, be particularly visible to people, which would be, you know, the greatest concern I would have. But if there are enough of those, then maybe, you know, think of doing something with this. Just a thought, nothing...
Yeah, that's why I wanted to come to the planning board so that you could...
So certainly, we can consider adding a paragraph there that would say something like a...we'd have to work on the wording, but basically, upon granting of a special permit, an accessory building within the front yard, provided that front yard is in excess of the minimum front yard required, could be granted based on conditions and similar to some of the words that Kevin just put out there.
As long as it's not, you know...
Right. If it's 300 or 400 feet off the road, and there are actually some of those in town, and the house is way, way back, it wouldn't create the issue that in a 150-foot standard frontage lot that's 3,500 square feet, the issues that created when you put a big garage or, as in some towns very nearby to us, have extremely large bonds in the front yard in front of the house, actually out on the street line.
Right.
You know, which, I mean, that wouldn't be permitted in East Bridgewater anyway because that would be in the front yard, in the frontage from the street. But certainly, we could put together some wording and consider bringing that as an additional item to town meeting to see if town meeting would be willing to adopt that.
And can I just ask one other question on subpart two? The way that that's amended, the...a garage or storage space for private motor vehicles. Is the whole next clause there extraneous?
In reality, probably it is.
Because I don't understand what it means exactly. And maybe it means to say, unattached?
Well, you can probably...
Parenthesis, integral part of the principal structure, garage or storage space, shall be considered?
The reason I think it was clause two, and again, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that's why I'm here with the board, so you can help me with the interpretation, is I believe that two was there to mean, basically, you're allowed a three-car garage. Whether it's detached or attached, you're allowed a three-car garage.
So part of the reason that that was, I believe that was added when we amended the bylaws in 87, was there were people in town, multiple places, and it was multiple builders, who were building like two-car garages 10 feet away from the principal house and 10 feet off the sideline, and then connecting them to the house.
Yeah. Oh.
In other words, they didn't have enough space to the right or left of the house to build a two-car garage in some of the smaller lots in town. So they're building it as an accessory building, 10 feet off the house and 10 feet off the sideline. So instead of having a 25-foot sideline, they ended up with a 10-foot sideline.
Right.
So part of the intent was to get to...if they do that, they create a zoning violation. Now, they really did anyway, but I think the intent of that being added was to make it immediately clear to the building inspector to want people to come in and stick a two-car garage in that's 10 feet off the sideline and 10 feet from the house, that you can't connect it.
Right.
Because a bunch of builders came back very soon after houses were sold and put breezeways in, connecting the house and the garage.
So Roy, if that was the problem, then why are we eliminating the language with regard to detached?
Are we talking about two different things here?
I'm talking about...
Number two.
Number, yeah.
Yeah.
Parenthesis two.
All right.
So my original question was just talking about where that second clause, attached and integral part of the principal structure belongs in the sentence. And then now I'm asking, do we, based on what that discussion just was, are we concerned with actually deleting or should we keep the detached piece?
I see what you're saying. That's a good question.
I think the language simply makes it clearer to, if someone comes in and says they want to pull a building permit to put a...
That would say that...
A breezeway or connection, all that you've got to do is point to that and say, you can't do that. You can't connect an accessory garage to a house if it's only got a less than 25-foot sideline.
I think the part Kevin's reading is that the garage or storage space...
Right, the second paragraph, part two.
...shall be considered part of the principal structure, may provide space for as many three cars for their principal uses in the residential...
So based on that discussion, isn't the point of paragraph two to say, just what you said, Roy, that you can have a garage, it can be up to three cars, whether it's attached or detached, and then subject to the restrictions in part one? Or am I missing...
Well, I see, I got you. I got you.
It was always worded in a very difficult way to understand, and I just kind of waded through the language that said, I think it means you can only have a three-car garage.
Well, so part of the reason for that is, is that the mathematical size of a three-car garage, or what a mathematical size of a three-car garage in 87 was, triggered, sat right on the maximum size accessory building you could have without going to the ZBA. So that was part of the language.
Right.
So I think that we wanted to make it clear that if you were going to go over a three-car garage, you had to go somewhere else. Now, attached and detached gets kind of ambiguous when we were working through this. And I rewrote that, or attempted to rewrite that three or four times, including look at some language from a couple of different towns, how they handle that.
Yeah, you have to be careful with that because there's like cases where they drive under garage, really doesn't meet the intent of detached, or it doesn't need to be regulated the same way as a detached or a laterally attached garage does. It's the basement. So maybe they have a garage door there, and they don't even park under there, they store their bikes or their canoes or whatever, but it's a garage door. I don't look at that as one of the three. But it's not clear, again, it's not clear in the language. So it's...that's one of those things that throws, you know, it pushes you into a discretionary area of, is this meeting the intent? And we're just trying to get a real good grip on what's the intent of the bylaw. So it's easier to explain when people are on the other side of the counter asking, well, why can't I do this?
It would seem to me that that should say, two should say, or mean, that if you're going to construct a separate structure for garage or storage purposes for private motor vehicles, whether it's attached or detached, you can do up to three, the three cars in a residential district, subject to then the requirements in one, so that you, you know, your setbacks are observed and all the other stuff.
There's already another section, there's already another section of the bylaw that covers that, though.
Okay.
Because if you get more than three cars, an accessory building is over, what is it, 600, is it 6...no, 900?
900.
900 square feet.
Yeah.
Anything in today, by today's definition, over three-car garage triggers a trip to the ZBA to get a special permit anyway.
So that would take out the detached piece?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's, I think that's why I took that out, to be...
Okay.
To not overlap with that section that says all principal buildings over 900 square feet require a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. That's in one of the general protective provisions.
So then, what you're left with is you can construct a, under this bylaw, under this section, you can construct a garage or storage space which is attached to your residence, which clearly has to comply with the provisions of section one and can be no more than three cars.
Yes.
So the only thing I would say is then, I would just take out, I would move the word attached to in front of garage. I think it makes it just, an attached garage or storage space for private motor vehicles shall be considered part of the principal structure, blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
I mean, that seems to me to be the sort of clearest way to say it.
All right, I think we're going to agree to that.
And then reference up to that it needs to comply, though, with one?
I think that would then fall within, if it is an attached garage, then that is part of the principal structure, and it would have to, the setbacks would have to be restricted, respected anyway, right? Yeah.
All right.
So I'll rewrite that as a draft four, put it on our agenda for further discussion in our next meeting.
It's not easy.
I'll pass it around, I'll pass it around electronically to everybody, let them take a look at it and see if they got suggestions for wording on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Get some clarity.
Thanks, Patrick.
All right, thanks. And just some eye clarity before we jump off this. If I go back to one, so when you say the front of the house, we're speaking about the address of the house, the house on a corner lot of two streets, we go by, the front of the house is considered where the address is? What I'm talking about? So if you're on the corner, you know...
So let's invite, let's invite Patrick back for a minute.
If you're on the corner of Oak and Washington, your address is Washington Street.
Right.
Washington Street is considered the front of the house.
Yes.
And Oak Street is not.
And so, there's a section in the bylaw that addresses corner lots for the principal structure, and it says that the front yard requirement, 50 feet, applies on both the front and the side yard. However, it's still a side yard. It's not another front yard, it's just a 50-foot side yard setback. An accessory structure can go in that side yard. There's lots of those around town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But not...
That part was clearly...
Not a, not a, unattached, right?
Correct, not attached. It has to be at least 10 feet away to be accessory, and it has to be at least 10 feet from the property line, the street, whatever. It can't obstruct...
Corner or clearance.
There's a vision clearance thing that's also in the bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I think that'll make sense. Okay, thank you, Patrick. Okay, next item, Whitmarsh Lane. So several things here. So there was some miscommunication in the previous discussion we had on Whitmarsh Lane. Technically speaking, the town didn't allow the cul-de-sac remain.
On the first...
Because there was an amended decision filed which removed that waiver very shortly after the original decision was filed. A second item is, we have confirmed with the building inspector, I'm sorry, town council, not the building inspector, but town council, that we really can't allow that to remain because that's not town property. The two wings of that cul-de-sac are private property owned by the residents on either side, and the requirement is part of the approval of phase three was that those be removed by the applicant as part of the phase three finished construction. Town council has advised, that's the only way we can allow those to remain, would be to hold another public hearing and that those wings would have to become part of town Because the problem we have with that is the street has a 40-foot layout, which means a significant portion of those two wings is private property. And the drainage was designed to have berms put down there so that the basins that are at the end of that work correctly and integrate correctly with the drainage and the following subdivision. So I don't think there's any viable way we can allow that to happen. So does anyone on the board have any question about that? Dot has all three of those letters, include the amended part of the phase two decision, I think it was the phase two decision. And she can email those after this meeting, and everyone can have a look at those.
It may be in the agenda pack.
All three of those in the book?
Yeah, there's one, two, a couple of letters in there.
And I believe the original, the majority of the original recorded plans are all in there. All of those clearly show the cul-de-sac's wings as roadway easements with a 40-foot
So the applicant wants us to, he's asking for the town...
Well, the request that I believe was originated by both the applicant that's doing the subdivision as well as the residents on either side of the road that technically speaking own the wings of that cul-de-sac to leave them there.
So the cul-de-sac would stay in place instead of the...
Well, we can't leave the cul-de-sac. We have, it's going to have to be paved with Cape Cod berms straight through and a 40-foot layout with whatever the pavement layout was. And then it needs to be graded back, so leaving, we can't leave the, you can't leave the pavement there because the pavement will be, would be below the grade of the, you'd end up trapping water behind both sides of that, in that, in those wings of the cul-de-sac. Because the elevations are correct the way they are now. The elevation of the roadway itself.
Mr. Chair, I believe the reason why these two abudas wanted to keep that cul-de-sac is because the cul-de-sac in the base before that was left.
It wasn't really left.
Okay. I haven't been down there, I don't know, but that's what I understood when I got the call.
It wasn't left untouched according to the letters we have and according to the report we got from the town engineer. It wasn't supposed to be if it was. So that, there's clearly a letter filed with the town clerk that was appealed by the applicant that says it can't be left. So legally, it's not there. If the pavement's there, I'm sorry about that, but it's not supposed to be. It was supposed to be taken care of by the phase two developer. And if we weren't informed of that by our engineering review at the end before we voted to release all of the bond money, that's shame on us, but... We run into the problem again where the towns are not allowed to maintain that, it's private property.
I agree.
And we can only maintain it while we've got that easement, and the easement automatically is extinguished once that easement is no longer needed for a turnaround. So by law, that easement goes away. When we say we're going to accept phase three, legally, that easement goes away. Okay, anyone on the board again? Anyone here? Next item now, we have a 427 North Bedford Street. I think we finally have the final revised plan, if I understand it correctly. So Dot, do we have a copy of this plan with space for signatures from the planning board? It says the planning board is, by endorsing this plan, has approved the site plan? So for everyone's understanding, what the applicant has done is he's gone, since he wasn't granted any variances, from the zoning bylaw in terms of standard parking sizes and the dimensions required, including the dimensions required for the turnaround on either side, he was not allowed to, somehow after his variances got granted, the plan changed in size from a 38-foot building to a 42-foot building, if I remember correctly. And he took that four feet off the parking, which meant then his parking lot no longer was in compliance with zoning. So we told him, I guess it's close to a month ago now at one of our previous meetings, that we can't approve the site plan if the site plan isn't in compliance with zoning. And the only thing he was granted from ZBA was the setbacks on the side of the building, on either side of the proper side of the building on one side, setback from the parking lot on the other side. So I see, given the new drawing, I think we need a drawing in a bigger scale than that, number one, in a Mylar form, number two, with a signature block on it, number three, to say that this plan has been endorsed under the Town of East Bridgewater zoning bylaw section requiring site plan approval, whatever that actual section is. And at that point, we can vote and sign the plan.
I'm sorry, what was it, three again, Roy? And we need to speak of scale.
Take a scale in Mylar form.
Mylar.
Okay. More information on here about the variance being obtained from the ZBA for the sightline setback? Does it need to be more clear on what that setback is now allowable by the ZBA?
So, yeah, there's a question I had, that he told us specifically that he was putting the parking spaces back to the minimum requirement under zoning. But there's a note on there, variances to table six, two parking lot dimensions, but he wasn't granted parking lot variances in the original variance, right? So he needs to fix that plan again. Tell him this time, before he submits anything to the board, to submit a draft copy of the plan that actually does all of the things we've asked for, because this is the third or fourth time now, and none of them that have come back have had everything we've asked for.
I think it needs to be more... I think it needs to be more specific on, on what the variance was, the date, you know, per the date of approval of the ZBA, whatever, um--
He does, he does--
The date of the approval--
He should have specific reference--
Yeah, specific reference and--
To the variance and to the book and page where it's recorded.
Yep, and what it was, what was the relief granted.
Yeah, with a specific list of the relief granted also on the plan. Okay? And, and, and tell him that he's free to give me a call if he has any questions. I'll try and calm him down, but, uh, his engineer's not doing an ideal job for him right now, because the engineer should be talking to us if he's got a question, is the, and I'm not sure why the engineer would do a plan that has to comply with the zoning bylaw that doesn't have somewhere for the planning board to sign. Anyone else have any comments on that? Feel free. Anyone here have any comments on that? No? Okay. Daisy Lane. So we're trying to work out the answers to this, but, uh... So apparently, because we waived, uh, let's say, town paid the streetlights on a small subdivision road that's up off of West Street, everyone thinks they can now do that. Well, fact of the matter is, they can't. So there's some confusion, Daisy Lane still is gonna have to have regular streetlights, which are gonna be fourteen-foot LED lights that curvatures the road five hundred foot distances in the end of the cul-de-sac. That's our standard still, and that will be the standard.
Well, that's, that's fine with me, I just came here for an answer.
So you're, you're certainly free to put whatever else you want for, let's call it, amenities on each of the individual lots, we have no issue with that. We do know that with underground wiring, if you wanna put in a streetlight out near the street that's part of the property, it probably should be done when the underground service is being done, so you don't have to then run wires back out from the house.
Absolutely, yeah.
So--
But every five hundred feet?
Yeah, that's the current guidelines that we have, is five hundred feet of roadway.
Okay, so regarding, when, I seen the approved plans, I thought that's all that I had to go with.
Yes, five hundred feet--
Where White Pines was--
Five hundred feet of roadway, we can be flexible with that, if there's a curve in the road at six hundred feet, then it can be six hundred feet at the curve.
Up to fifteen foot tall, that's fine. So the lights--
Fourteen, the, the new ones now in the service document from, uh, uh, National Grid, there's a fourteen-foot selection, there's no longer a fifteen, there's a thirty-foot selection, I think, but fourteen, according to the DPW director in an email, text actually, I think, but, uh, Rob, you can comment on that, I think that we're gonna be going with fourteen-foot poles, LED lighting.
LED, yeah, just like it's specified on the plan, but every five hundred feet.
Yes.
But what I would like to do when I was doing the app was making myself or the homeowner responsible for that, and put an addendum in that they're responsible for any upkeep on that, because, you know, there'll be one at the end of the driveway, but to, you know, further that, we'll make it so there five hundred feet go within reason, but if there's two lights on one property, then that just goes to the homeowner, they're, they're very in--
Well, actually, the, the streetlights are paid for by the town, they're gonna bel-- they're gonna belong--
After it's accepted.
They're gonna belong to, yes, af-- after it's accepted. Up until then, it's, it's the developer's responsibility to pay the light bill.
Okay, so--
Till acceptance.
Okay, well, uh, one of my suggestions, uh, I'm doing on a subdivision right now, is I'm putting some lights in the property, uh, but those ones, once the town accepts them, I turn them on. Is that okay? So there'll still be light in the street, I was, you know, progressing--
We're not gonna tell you what to do on the private lots, that's--
No problem.
It's up to you.
Okay.
That's, that's outside the, as, as long as whatever you build in the private lot meets the other guy's requirements that was here earlier from the building commissioner, we're not worried about that?
Okay, uh, now, what National Grid does need is a signature from you guys. I've, I've, you know, signed it, so, um--
So we gotta make sure that the--
So I can fully put the application in, they have everything together, um, except for the point where the town hasn't signed the application.
So we gotta, we gotta verify that, 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 uh, the correct of those four or five boxes is checked off. It's the one that the, the, the lighting is billed to the developer until such time as the town accepts the road, the town agrees to take over payment for the electricity after that.
Okay.
That's what the check that needs to be in that.
No, no problem, and that's why I'm here, I just wanted to figure out which is the correct way.
The second check needs to be fourteen-foot poles with LED lights on.
Okay.
And once that's done, it's not actually us, it's the selectmen that have to be the other signature on that.
Right, okay, all right, well, I appreciate this.
Because they're the ones that are authorizing LED to, I'm sorry, to, to National Grid to build the town.
Okay.
We can't authorize, the planning board is not allowed to authorize National Grid to build the town.
Right, and I didn't specifically mean the planning board, I meant I need a signature somewhere.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so it should be the, the fourth option in that first sections.
Okay.
It should be the one that says National Grid owned, installed and maintained lights, unmeted billing, bill separate from customer meters, service billing will be taken by the city or town once accepted. Prior to the acceptance, it's up to the developer to pay for the, for the light bill.
Sounds good. And then--
Then it should be, uh, one, two, three, the fifth selection down, fourteen, fourteen-foot post-op pole, post-op LED luminaire, fifty watts.
Fifty watt, okay. So I fill it out properly, and then what do I do with it? Bring it to the selectmen and--
Yeah, you, you fill it out correctly in the, in the developer's signature section.
Yeah.
Then it goes to the selectmen for their signature.
Okay, now, does that need to go to a meeting, or can I just bring it there?
Uh, I'm guessing it's probably gonna have to be signed at a selectman's meeting, I'm not sure they're allowed to sign stuff that's gonna eventually be a town expenditure outside of a meeting, but Rebecca in the office could probably better tell you that.
Okay, no problem.
It's possible they could authorize, blanket authorize, the town administrator to sign them when they come in, I don't know.
Sure.
To avoid the, you know, to avoid the potential delay that comes in when, when that's being done.
All right, uh, when is the, the next selectman's meeting, if, if it has to go to the meeting?
I would suggest, I would suggest you ask Rebecca in the selectman's office--
No problem. I ask her--
There's probably still somebody down there now, right?
I was just gonna say--
Oh, okay, all right. Okay. All right, well, you made it clear, I, I appreciate it, sounds pretty simple, I just gotta--
Yeah, just FYI, the majority of the town offices are open till eight o'clock on Monday night.
Okay, very good, I appreciate all your time.
Okay, you're welcome. I'm sorry. Can we, for the record, have your name and address?
My name's Scott Burge, it's 492 Front Street, Waymouth, Mass.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Thanks.
Okay, I know. All right, thank you, and she's in the first floor?
First floor, all the way down the other end.
All right, thank you, well.
All right, so we're, we're, we're gonna be on an ongoing review of our draft templates, so let me give you an update here while I can. So I'm, I'm assuming you wanna talk to us about something, or you're just observing?
Under me?
Yes.
No, just observing, thank you.
Okay. All right, so the, I, I think we all, and again, my third mayor cooper, that'll be the last one for now, but, uh, recognizing the majority of people sitting up here at the table, with one exception, have only been here for a year or two, or maybe three, we're working on developing, let's, let's call them better legally worded templates, we've been getting extensive help from, from, from Kevin. And that's greatly appreciated. We will keep iterating those templates back and forth, probably put them on the agenda for the next meeting, because I, I think maybe at the next meeting we'll have all the feedback we're gonna get. We'll pass that back to everyone to make sure that we're all satisfied that, and I think the idea would be that the majority of the standard conditions that we're gonna have on our various approvals, whether it be subdivisions, special permit plus site plan, or just site plan alone, would be included in the template, we can simply, if there's ones that don't fit and don't apply to a specific project, we can just cross them off. There's certainly probably gonna be additional ones on most projects, and certainly we can fine-tune the wording where it applies, if it needs to be, to, to apply to a specific project in, in those existing. The key being, uh, I was made, uh, clearly aware that when I was saying condition one, condition three, condition two, whatever it was, that the majority of people sitting in the table had no idea what I was talking about. And it, I don't know why it never dawned on me that we should make sure that everyone has those conditions ahead of time, first of all, number two, that everyone's satisfied, because some of those conditions we haven't touched much for probably the better part of ten or fifteen years. Okay? So the, the current ones, Dot has, I think, well, they, they were sent out with this agenda, right? So what I'd like to do is, is everyone can look those over, if you have questions, feel free to call me if you have a question, you'd prefer to write an email question that says, what does item whatever mean, and you wanna discuss it in the meeting with everyone for that, that's fine, however you wanna do it. And then we'll, we'll put those on our agenda for the next meeting, which by the way is gonna be like four weeks from now. Because our next-- first Monday of September is Labor Day, so we won't be meeting Labor Day, that's a, a legal holiday. So it will be the third Monday in September will be our next meeting. We're gonna attempt, we're gonna do a final review of the, I'm gonna do a final review and have those minutes of June seventh sent to everyone again, so we'll try and resolve that issue. After reading them a couple of times with the comments that I noted down from a previous meeting, I think, uh, I may be in part at fault for, for the discussion we were having, but we'll see if we can amend the minutes to some extent prior to, or modify the minutes to some extent prior to the next meeting. And we'll have a discussion about that, too, we'll get those resent to everyone. I'm gonna continue to review the fees, but I'm kinda wanting to wait and see where our engineering firm goes to get a better baseline of what they're gonna wanna see for, for various reviews. Has kind of expected the numbers that have come in on the first couple of reviews in terms of their estimate, uh, let's say significantly over and above what we were previously paying to, uh, our engineer, and as we've discussed again previously, those fees have to be paid by the applicant, because the town is prohibited from spending monies on what, what amounts to improvements on private property. The Elwood Court at, on, off of West Street, they've submitted a, a acceptance package, that package has been sent to town council for them to verify that that package is complete. It's a pretty extensive package with the, the deed takings, uh, at least preliminary versions of the deeds and the takings and so on and so forth, uh, we'll keep you updated with that. We haven't officially asked our engineer to review the ASBIL plan, right? So this is a question I, I guess needs to be asked before we officially accept the ASBIL plan. This, this would end up being a little difficult, since they never reviewed the plan, the subdivision plan itself. I would expect the cost to review the ASBIL plan would be significantly higher than it would be if they've been the review engineer all along, since this is their first look at it. So I'll leave it up to the board to decide what we wanna do with that, it's, it is a small subdivision, although that's not the only important piece. We could ask DPW to look at it and see if they see anything that's clearly and obviously wrong. I understand that, but I don't think we've officially asked them to comment on it. So I, I think if we were to do that, we would officially ask them in writing that we're considering waiving the review by the reviewing engineer because of the catch-22 that puts us in with the reviewing engineer, where he would probably need to actually send a team on site to do some significant survey work, as opposed to having all of that information in his files from reviewing the original subdivision plan. But I'll leave it up to the board, my suggestion would be sending, we send the copy of the ASBIL, I'll let them know that the ASBIL we have received, we're considering waiving having a new reviewing, uh, engineering firm look at that, if the DPW is, is willing to look at the, the site and indicate that they're okay with the physical work that's been done in the, in the, in the ASBIL as it currently sits. If the answer's no, then I'm afraid we'll have to send it to the reviewing engineer.
Okay, so you're gonna speak with them?
We're gonna send them a letter, if, if the board's agreeable with that.
So Elwood Court was the one that had the, the residences that came here because there was concerns of drainage on that road?
There was one house lot that had a low point, and it was actually on the side of the cul-de-sac, and, and--
But they all came here to, because they were concerned about the elevation of the road and how the drainage was working off of it?
There was multiple people here, but there was only one person that was actually complaining, as I understand it.
So I guess I just--
Several of the residents didn't like the, the way the cul-de-sac was, was installed, but it was installed per the plan, because we actually did check that.
I just think it's important to make sure that the plan is in compliance with the, um, with the, you know, the application and the, um, permit that they got, whether it's, you know, DPW that does it, or it's the engineer, either way, I think that we definitely wanna make sure that that's in compliance.
Well, I know we've confirmed the drainage is working, because--
This book?
Who was, who was the contractor that did the road, came back and infrareded that area and did some additional work and re-rolled it again? And I know it doesn't hold water now when it rains, because I've gone down and looked at it, so... Let's, let's write the letter to DPW and see what their response is, whether they're willing to confirm the, that they're willing to accept it as being built to, to code, or to, to the plans, and see what their response is. Otherwise, I think we'll have to, we'll have to send it to the engineer with some explicit instructions as to how much work we want them to do. Because I don't think we can, I'm not sure we can even legally require the, the applicant to pay for what basically is a first-pass engineer review. Who did the ASBIL?
I'm someone--
Was Larry, right? Is there a certification statement signed by, by Larry's engineer that says that they've certified the actual, I don't think there was in the ASBIL that I looked at, so--
Um, oh, I don't know about the actual ASBIL.
Environment, yeah, environmental partners have suggested to us that from now on, when we get an ASBIL, that there be a certification statement signed by the, the engineer, that they're certifying that, that all of the work done and as reflected on the ASBIL is in full compliance with the original approved plan, all modifications allowed thereto, or something like that. And since we haven't accepted that ASBIL, I, I think we should, and effectively by putting a signature on the plan and a stamp, he is certifying that, but I think, uh, environmental partners, in one of our amended Wednesday meetings, that suggested we have them do that, so... So let's, let's do that, and we'll ask DPW to review that and, and see where they stand on that. In the future, any ongoing projects that are originally reviewed by environmental partners, as well as the installation and construction reviews, we would ask them to review the ASBIL.
In the decisions that we do, does it talk about what the ASBIL's conditions are on who lays the mid--
In the specific decisions, no, but--
It needs to have a certification.
It is in our rules and regulations what has to be provided to us as part of the acceptance package, part of that is the ASBIL plan.
But it, does it say ASBIL plan, or ASBIL plan certified by the, with the certification?
Well, our reviewing engineers told us that that's implicit in the ASBIL plan, because they're putting that, they have to put an engineering stamp on it.
Okay.
But he suggested that the wording also be added.
Yeah.
So also?
I think the wording helps--
Yeah.
You know, be clear.
All right, so we'll go ahead and forward that to the DPW, based on their feedback, we'll then decide what the next step will be on the, we will formally vote that, depending on what that feedback is. Until such time as we get that feedback, we'll hold that item open, and based on past practice, we'll probably decide that before we get feedback anyway. And based on past practice, we'll probably decide that before we get feedback anyway.
On the, um, draft, uh, decisions for the site plan and special permit, has, uh, our legal counsel taken a look at it with any kind of, um, recommendations they make?
Not yet, but I, I wanted to make sure the board felt comfortable with them, and then we'll...
Send it over.
Yeah, so we don't have to iteratively send drafts to them.
Right, yeah, I mean...
But we will certainly ask them to...
But they could send it to them, and they could draft some stuff, and then we could look at it so that, you know, you're not kind of trying to...
Past practice says they won't do anything other than say okay or not okay, but...
Really?
Yeah.
But some...
We can have that discussion outside the meeting if you want to, but...
Okay.
Okay, the Victory Lane streetlights, which have been an ongoing issue, in part, and just for everybody's understanding, the, the current policy by National Grid has changed again several times iteratively since we initially started discussing the Victory Lane streetlights almost two years ago. Apparently, there is the new policy, which we just discussed with Mr. Burgess, uh, and it is, and the selectmen have now finally reached a standard based on guidance from DPW, as well as us, that they're going to use 14-foot posts, 50-watt LEDs. They're going to be owned by National Grid. It's going to be option four in the, the options in terms of who pays for what. It's going to be option four in the post, which is the 14-foot pole and the post-op luminaire. It will now be, the developer has to provide that form with those things checked off for the selectmen to verify with all of his information in the first half of the second page of the application. He then provides that to the town, and the town, i.e. through the selectman's office, signs, whoever that's going to be, it may be the town administrator, from what I'm being told, going forward. But in any case, that's, that's how it's going to work. So the suggestion was, is, is we take that form and provide it to the selectman's office with all of the stuff that's not acceptable to the town crossed out. It's a Microsoft Word document, so you can, you can, you can put crossouts through it. Pre-check off the sections that we want and give that form to the developer. So he's not, he doesn't have a form with 18 or 19 blank checkboxes on it. He gets a form that's already pre-checked off with everything on it, with instruction sheet that says, "Fill out the sections that, that, that apply to you," and return it to the board of selectmen for final approval, and then be done with it. Because technically, that's not our approval. Okay? And I actually do have that form now in Word format. I was going to fill it all out, check all of the boxes, and, and we'll pass it back through the office, and then we'll forward that down to the selectman's office for them to... We'll keep a copy as well, so they can get it from us, because they're typically going to come to our window, because they're dealing with a planning board and a roadway construction, so we have the form.
Is that the one that Mr. Burgess should have to send downstairs? The one that, that you...
Well, as long as he's got the right boxes checked, we're okay. And I think we were pretty clear as to which boxes he needs to check. If he can get that done right now, I don't have a problem with that. All right, let's leave, let's leave that last item open until our next meeting, because I, I need to look at that further, because there's some questions with that. Other than that, next meeting is Monday, September 20th. Anyone here in the board have anything they, they need to discuss, questions to ask, suggestions to make? Feel free. Okay, given that, I guess we can entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, we've got a motion, Riley. I think we already got a second from Hanley. So we got a motion, Riley, second, Hanley, to adjourn. It's, uh, looks like 7:53 PM. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we'll adjourn at 7:53 PM. Thank you all.
Thank you.